Call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve with the agenda addition?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the addition. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that is not on today's agenda? See, non-approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Those who approves, bills, second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Request for approval of agreement for financial support of Valley Water Rescue. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
We're here this morning just to get the approval. Again, we've got a longstanding MOU with Valley Water Rescue as it pertains to them doing the diving services for the sheriff's office here in Clay County and then they do respond at times elsewhere to neighboring counties when requested. In that MOU, it spells out our financial obligation, which is about $3,500.
Thirty-five sixty-seven.
It's stayed at that price for the past several years. It hasn't gone up. It hasn't moved or anything like that. And it also spells out just as far as who is covering the workman's comp for them when they're deployed on the Minnesota side and who's covering the workman's comp when they're deployed over on the Cast County side as well. So this is, I think it's just, we're here to make sure that we get this MOU finally in place. I don't necessarily know if we've had one in place in the past. And I think it's good to get something on paper now.
Okay. It's, what'd you say, the, our cost is about $3,500 a year, roughly?
Thirty-five sixty-seven, which has been paid for 2019.
That's a bargain for us. I mean, if we had to, this is something, when we need it, we need it. We have to have it.
One department would pay for it.
Yeah. And so if we had to do this ourselves, it would be much more expensive. So it's, and they do a great job and it's a great service they provide. So, any questions for this?
Questions in terms of usage, how it's changed in the past few years? Has it gone up? It seems to, we seem to hear about it more in the news.
Yeah. The, our usage probably hasn't changed too, you know, a couple times a year probably is our average. I mean, it's not a whole lot, but it's just nice to know we, they are available and they respond readily if there's a call out, so.
And we've used them twice so far this year that I can think of, just for the drone operations, because they are drone pilots. So they've come out during the flood and then just recently for a crash that we had where we wanted to get some overhead views of it.
Yeah, they do more than just water rescue, so.
Correct. They have dogs, they have cadaver dogs, search and rescue dogs, things of that nature.
And I think it's all volunteer service for the people that are on there, too.
It is.
It is, yeah. There's no personal financial gain to anybody that's on that team. They don't get a dime for it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of this.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. There you go. Thanks, commissioners. Okay. Budget review, county attorney's office. Pam.
Morning.
And you brought backup, I see, so.
I did. I brought Ms. Olsonowski. She's the one that handles and writes our grants and keeps track of all that, so if you have any questions about the grants, she's the best person for that, so I brought her along.
Pam, maybe before we start, we've got your addition, too. Maybe we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Get that out of the way. So, do you want a full-time legal assistant? Do you have a vacancy?
Yes, we do. We have a vacancy. She hasn't formally submitted her resignation. She's going to retire. Expect that to come July 22nd. So she is retiring due to medical reasons, so that will leave a full-time position, legal assistant position, open. We do need to fill that position as soon as possible. We've been, she's been out on medical leave for the last three months, so we've been scraping by without her, but it's getting to the point now we need to get that filled. And she was on the highest step. She had been with the county for 27 years, so her replacement will come in on a step one, so there'll be significant savings as far as that goes, once we fill that position.
Okay. Where the board wishes on the position?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the full-time legal assistant vacancy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, ladies, whenever you're ready.
All right. So we did submit the budget. As you will notice probably immediately, the cost of the salaries has gone up. That is twofold. It's not as dramatic as it probably looks in the budget from the 2019 to 2020, because part of it was last year's budget when we redid it at the end of the year because of the, we didn't contract with Moorhead. We had only budgeted Mr. Melton's salary for three months because he didn't take salary for the first nine months. And then we agreed to not fill one legal assistant position, but we did maintain the two attorneys and one legal assistant that came from the city. So the salaries that we have now for 2020 includes Mr. Melton's salary for the entire year, as well as those two attorney positions, as long as, as well as a legal assistant that had been moved up from, was in a different place in the budget last year, and it just moved up to, under the county attorney, instead of the county attorney, and then the contract position. So that's why you see that difference in the salary position. As far as the salaries for the people in victim services and restorative justice, that has been moved down to a different, different area where it's covered by, mainly by grants. So that's the difference in what you see from the salaries from last year to this year. As far as anything else in the budget, I think we've pretty much remained the same. There was an increase in our, what we call our MCAPs, or our programming, computer programming. There was an increase in the price of that, so that went up a little bit. But other than that, I don't think we've increased anywhere in the budget. One thing that probably looks a little bit different is under uniforms. That, again, was partially moved up. The cost moved up from the city attorneys up to the county attorneys. That is something they get through their union contract, that each is for clothing, I suppose, but they get at the beginning of the year one lump sum, each attorney. So that's what the uniform is, and that's why there's an increase in that. It was just moved up from where it used to be on the city contract position on the budget up to the county attorney budget. Other than that, I don't think that there's anything significant from last year's budget that's gone up.
Okay.
When you say uniforms, what do we supply for uniforms for city attorneys?
Well, it's, essentially, it's something that they bargain in with their union that, to buy like a suit, because we have to wear suits. Suits are more expensive than just, so it's just something they bargained into their union contract. We put it under uniforms because it comes as one lump sum in their first paycheck of the year. And I don't remember the exact amount, if it's $300 each or $400, I'm not real sure.
So it's a cheap suit?
It is a cheap suit. And it doesn't pay for the dry cleaning, so. Stay clean.
Thanks for that.
Okay, go ahead. Excuse me. I had a question on the last page, under the VOKA. Can you just explain to me the increase in the salary, salaries regular, first line item?
Okay. And that used to be when, I think last year when they did, we did the budget, those salaries were included up in the attorney.
Okay.
So they've just been moved and separated out to be under the VOKA, so that would be the victim services. It's always been there, it's just been moved to a different place to make it hopefully a little more clear where those VOKA grants are going.
I guess I'll just, I'll just make a comment. Over the last year, I think we've been uniquely active in your budget and knowing that there was going to be some movement. And while it's kind of hard to follow on here, I think we've all had a pretty good, up-to-speed knowledge of what's going on there, so I don't see any surprises.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, we did go through the process with Lori. We did go through in detail where the salaries were versus where they are now. And I think one of the moves that this board made was, at the time when they agreed to keep the salaries and the positions, it was a, it was a net. There was no net increase to the budget, and we did confirm that through our process.
Any other questions for these ladies? It'll be easy on you today, it looks like, so. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item is budget review, the extension office. Ben, good morning.
Good to see you. Thanks for the time today.
It's significantly cooler in here as opposed to the last time I was here.
Oh, yeah. I'm not sweating through my shirt. That's science. Thank you for having air here. Yeah. So, yeah, well, speaking of the fair, we had a great fair. Thanks for those of you that stopped by and visited all the 4-H things that were going on. And we've got roughly 30 kids will be going to the state fair this year to represent the county at various projects, so it's great to see. So, just going through our budget, pretty consistent and similar to previous years, but I'll just note a couple things. So, line 6105, salaries regular, that's the amount for our program staff. So Randy Nelson, our horticulture educator, and then the two 4-H program coordinator positions. One of them is full-time, currently held by Mitzi Marlin, and the second one is half-time, held by Lisa Kassenbauer. This is a 2% increase over 2019 as part of the contract we have with the county. So 2020 would be the second year of the current contract that we're, that we're in. And then just one thing to note with that, Mitzi is leaving in September. She's taking another career direction, and we are going to be planning to interview for that position next week, and so we'll keep you updated on that. The other thing with that, those positions, is Lisa's position, that's the $10,000 and revenue above. That, we're hoping that that grant funding can continue again. So we'll find out about that pretty soon as well, but like I said, we're hoping and expecting that to be in there and continue, so we put that in right away, too, with this. And then the $6,000 to the right in new requests in salaries regular, we're asking, requesting that the county would again fund one of the 4-H interns that we have in the summer. The county used to do that a few years ago, and then the 4-H Federation just started funding both of them. But if the Federation had that $6,000 back, they could, they could do much more with promotion and marketing, with 4-H recruitment activities, more project days, more club development and curriculum, and then they would also have some funding available to assist with some things at the county fairgrounds with various improvements that take place there every year. Otherwise, the other changes that we have are just some small decreases in printing and publishing. We decreased that by $200. Marketing is another $200 decrease. Office supplies decreased by 200. And then we decreased travel and expenses by 100 as well. So that's kind of the rundown. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Just maybe have a comment in terms of the Federation, if the county were to pick up the $6,000 for that intern. It's my observation in the past couple years that count, or the county clubs, the kid level, they are starting to put more dollars forward to fairground improvements. And I think that's, that's something that is positive, to see that they're investing in the fairgrounds, but as you all know, that those are not new buildings, and there are some significant upgrades that will need to happen in some, in some short period probably, and so that money, I've heard, will go towards those improvements.
Yep. Namely, I think the food stand, you know, which is a money raiser for 4-H as well, so the little money that we can put towards that helps them continue to raise money, too.
Any other questions for Ben? It'll be pretty easy on you, too, this morning, Ben.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, Ben.
Planning and zoning. Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Third guy, though. You might, might be tough on you this morning, so.
Well, I think my second week on the job here, they said, hey, it's time to do the budget. So, here we are. I think some of the big changes for this year is we've added that new staff person, and that wasn't reflected in last year's budget. So now that we're fully up and running, that's, that's been included on there. And with a lot of us being new to the department, another notable increase is in the training budget, just to make sure that everyone's up to speed and well-equipped to address any of the issues and demands of the residents of the county. With the, with the addition of the planning technician to go out and do inspections and things of that nature, we also are requesting an increase in our travel budget, just to make sure that we have the resources to get out and be in the county and complete those inspections, so. Those are kind of the big, big things. There isn't really too much of a change from, from last year in terms of expenditures. So, pretty straightforward. Any questions?
Questions for Matt?
Just have a couple of comments. Sorry. One item of note is the Shoreland grant that we receive. I think there's been an individual that said we've had, we're getting millions of dollars for that, and so I wanted to note that that's, you know, very minimal in the budget. And also, can we talk a little bit, was it the Shoreland invasive species that we transferred to SWCD?
Yep. That's, that's over to the SWCD now, so, yep. And we are still getting funding for the riparian aid, state riparian aid as well this year.
Are we doing some matching funds with the, I was thinking, other feedlot program? Don't we do some matching funds with SWCD or?
Well.
That's not.
Yeah, we have.
That'll be probably Kevin's for the budget, huh?
Well.
Yeah.
Yes. It's for the Kevin's budget, so what I think you're referring to is if we were to up a certain amount, the state were to have matched that, and so through the SWCD budget, they were going to work with several different departments to see if they could work that out, specifically highway, sort of solid waste and possibly planning.
See, there's no amount there. Okay. Very good.
Any other questions for Matt? Yeah, it'll be easy on you, too, Matt.
All right.
We're hearing a lot of good, positive things about what's going on there, so you're doing a good job. We appreciate it, so.
Thanks. I appreciate the feedback and hope to keep it up, so.
Good work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, let's see, Dave probably won't be here for a while. We're way ahead of schedule here, so we can do our committee reports. Jen, you ready?
I'm already.
Well, take your time. We've got lots of time. Kevin looks like he's chomping at the bit to get his report out.
Well, I am kind of in a county fair fog, as you know. We were out there the whole time, and just to piggyback off the comment that Ben made, it was, there are great things happening in Clay County, and I think it was really a testament to the future, and I'm really excited about the individuals and young people that work so hard. And the other thing is that the, I think, the feedback I had was that the attendance at the county fair was higher than it's been in a lot of years. The Friday night grandstand usually brings 100, 150 people, and there were well over 500 people there, and so that's, that's good to see. And we, Steve, did we have, came in last week, or was it? I'm forgetting. I'll remember as you all talk. I apologize. Kevin can go, though.
Let's see, last Tuesday, the 9th, we have a highway tracking committee meeting, and they're in the process of reviewing four applicants for a senior engineering technician. And then we got updates on the Glendon and 15th Avenue North projects that are going on. The seal coating projects are complete, and the maintenance is working on subcut areas on County Route 81 and 86. And they're doing some reclaim stabilization on County Route 86 as well. They're, they're coordinating efforts with FEMA regarding the last flood disaster area, disaster, and FEMA is going to be setting up site here shortly. And he did, he did want to note that the 2019 fuel budget is already at 70%, used, you know, so it's, you know, beyond the, you know, we're not, beyond, just a little over halfway through the year, so he'll be monitoring that for a while, but the conditions and the weather dictated that it needed to be used, so. Then on the 10th, and the 11th, I was in Duluth for the Lakes Country Service Cooperative, their annual conference that they have. That was well-attended. There was a lot of people there, and there were some very interesting speakers that, one of them in particular I was impressed with, and I might talk with Stephen about maybe looking at, seeing it, about having them for something for our, for our management to hear him. He was very, very good. Then yesterday, in the morning, we had a diversion executive committee chairs coordination meeting, and I'll come back to that in a minute. And then, yesterday afternoon, Commissioner Waylon, myself, and Steve met with James regarding, we have a regional juvenile detention meeting on Thursday, and we went over with him some budget changes that we're going to be proposing on Thursday to the entire group, so we did it in the afternoon. But back to the diversion. Yesterday, the diversion authority did file a complaint with district court in Becker County regarding the decision by the Buffalo Red. I'm handing out copies of that complaint for each of you. Steve's got one. It's certainly public knowledge now, and you can read for yourself what's in the complaint, that, you know, we, we believe that their decision was arbitrary, courteous, and contrary to law, and we are asking for relief by having the judge instate the permit. So that process has started, and it will, I'm sure it will take some time to do. I just want to remind this board about past history, seeing as how we do have a couple minutes, Mr. Chair. Back in late 2011 or early 2012, there was a request made by Ottertail County and Wilken County to expand the Buffalo Red River Watershed District from, to include a small territory in Ottertail County. We, as Clay County Board, were certainly not opposed to adding that area to the water, to the Watershed District, but in so doing, the request then was to go from a five-member to a seven-member board. Back when it was a five-member board, Clay County, as it should have been, had a majority vote on that board. We, we have about 80% of the taxing capacity at that time. We had roughly the same amount in, in population and the vast majority of the land area within the Watershed District. I had asked our board back in February of 2012 to submit to the Bowser that we had no problem with the expansion, but felt that the one new board position should go to Ottertail, and the other one should go to Clay County. We then asked the city of Moorhead to support us in that, which they did through resolution. And part of our concern was that if, because there was a recommendation that one board member go for, go to Ottertail and the other one to Wilken County, that would have given the Becker, Ottertail, and Wilken County the majority of votes in the Watershed District, contrary to the population, the taxing base and every, and the land, all the land. I warned that this could, this could work against Clay County. Keep in mind that all of these issues, every bit of the water that's involved with those ends up flowing through to Clay County. So all the drainage that goes in from those places ends up in Clay County. Yet, you know, I warned that, that we could be held hostage based on projects that we want, or we could be held hostage based on projects we don't want, by control of the other boards. In other words, they could, they could go out and they could decide to create all the ditches they want that would flow into Clay County, and if they have those four votes, they could do it, and the water would run to Clay County. In this particular case, when it came to Clay County, obviously supporting and being a member of the diversion authority and wanting permanent flood protection for our region and the Moorhead area, we had four votes against it. And those four people come from Audubon, Fergus Falls, Rossay, and Dent. Those four people are stopping this project temporarily, trying to stop this project. The project is moving forward. We've gotten federal approval to go forward with certain things. But it's a case where we now have four non-elected people really trying to do what they can to prevent this, prevent this project from happening in Minnesota. We warned of this. I, I'm going to, there's going to be more to come on this. I believe that our board should be also filing, and I'm going to be recommending that we send a letter to Bowser for reconsideration of those appointments. I'm going to be, I'm putting together some information regarding that, and I will be putting forward a proposal to, to submit to Bowser for reconsideration of where the majority should be on this. I think, for anybody listening out there, you know, that, you know, we're elected people here, and I certainly have, it's been a priority of mine since I've been in office as a county commissioner, to get permanent flood protection, and we're not going to stop until, till that's done. And I, I think if folks just read this complaint, and they'll, they can see for themselves what has been done and how they've made decisions to deny this permit that are just contrary to Minnesota law. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I am done with my report. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I am done with my report.
I remembered mine, sorry. Had time to gather my thoughts. I had several calls last week about the flooding in Baker along the railroad track there with the deluge of water that we got, and so I had discussed with Kathy from the Buffalo Red about possible relief that could happen there, and so she was sending one of their engineers out to look at that. Had some discussion with Lakeland. They will be having an open house on Monday, next, this coming Monday, in Glenwood at their new site, so if you wanna trek down to Glenwood on Monday, you're more than welcome to do that. And then there will be an item on the planning and zoning, a planning commission meeting tonight in regards to expansion at the Hutterite Colony, and so I'd had some discussions with neighbors and went up there to look at some of the concerns myself, so that concludes.
Thanks. Frank?
Tuesday I had the highway tracking meeting, which Commissioner Campbell's already discussed. On that work at Fifteenth Avenue, it should be starting this week, so I think they're gonna start working on it this week, probably. Highway nine to, County Road nine to Thirty-Fourth Street, so that should take about two, three weeks to complete. Other than that, Thursday I was at the fair at Barnesville, Government Day. Let's see, we hit recycling down there, Shannon was down there with her, with her recycling, and saw Rhonda had Tracy and Gail down there, and did a good, good job recruiting people for, volunteer drivers and for foster care. So they're really out there bringing people in there and talking to them, so I was glad to see that they were there, so. Those were my meetings.
Thanks.
I think the highway department also had a piece of equipment out there, an employee on the other side.
It was on the other side, they never brought it over, I guess, but they.
Jim?
Thank you. On Thursday I, I attended the Clay County Soil and Water Conservation District meeting in which they approved well-decommissioning, decommissioning and water and sediment control basin cost shares, also buffer cost shares. And we had all the usual reports and all the departments in there, and we also received a report from Pheasants Forever about the Crestwood property south of the Convent Road. It has successfully been seeded with the pollinator habitat now, so.
Right before the rain, I heard as well.
Yeah. So that's my full report.
Thanks. Now, let's see, I had the meeting yesterday with James from Detention and, and I think everything's looking pretty good there with budget issues for the detention center. And let's see, I had a radio board meeting, I attended ITV last week, and there were some issues there that needed to be cleared up as far as Cass County and their participation with the Minnesota radio system, and that was all worked out, and that was it for me, so. Steve?
How are you, Mr. Chair Commissioners? Last Tuesday, as I mentioned, we had highway tracking. And one of the things that we also spoke about was FEMA is going to be coming in for about two to two and a half months here to, to assess the, the flood cost from earlier this spring, and the hope is that some of the, some of that fuel budget issues that we are addressing in our, in our highway budget may be, may be reimbursed there. We started budget discussions over the last week, again with the people that were here this morning. I met multiple times with Darren and a series of HR issues going on in the county. The, the juvenile center, I toured the juvenile center last, last week. I sent out, they did have a nice article in the forum in WDAY on the expansion. Their things are starting to really come together over there, looks good. On the eleventh, we had Strive meeting, we continued to look at recruitment and retention with our, with our group, our committee. County management, we, we focused on our budget and our market study, facility planning. On the eleventh, participated in a meeting with Darren and Tessa from David Drowns, she had a few clarification questions in, in, prior to our PIC meeting this week. We had the department head evaluation, and participated on, yesterday in the diversion authority chair coordinator meeting, as Campbell's discussed. I had a call with our labor attorney. I did have a phone meeting yesterday with Mike Brethorne from Becker County and Brett Arney from Bowser. The Becker County Board on July second directed their administrator to engage conversations about looking at re, the potential redistricting of the Wild Rice Watershed District. And so we talked, talked a little bit about what that would entail. Right now, the, the Wild Rice is broken up into three districts. Each district has two counties, Norman and Polk, who has three representatives on their, on their managers, and Owen in Clearwater who have two, and Clay and Becker who also have two. Right now, the, the way that their, their watershed is set up is the county that has the largest, largest area of population makes the appointments. And so Becker County, right now, we, we work with Becker County and have made the appointments, and Becker County is, is looking at wanting to, to have their own ability to appoint. And so I took that information back to, from our phone conversation yesterday. Mike is gonna bring that, or Mr. Brethorne is gonna bring that back to his board for, for further discussion, so. Yesterday afternoon, again, we had a phone conversation with Tessa from David Drowns in preparation for today with Lori, involve Lori and Darren. Let's see. Focused on the building study, the survey came in, came out this, came out this week for review. It's a very detailed, about a six-page, six-page form that our, our administration and our, our department heads and our renters are gonna be asked to fill out. Right now, they're tentatively looking for a kickoff meeting on August, August fifth, where they'll be, each department will be formally provided the survey, which will have about a week to a week and a half to fill out. And so legislative wrap-up, I did send out an email last week. This Thursday, Governor Walz is going to be in town with, with Senator Ekin, Representatives Markhart and Lee, and so if our, if any of you want to attend, we do have to actually register for, for that through the chamber, and so if you let, let us know, we can do that, and if we need to post it as an open meeting, we can get that taken care of, so. I think that, that's my report.
Okay. Tony, you have anything for us?
I don't.
We'll take a break for a few minutes until.
You know, I could, I could maybe speak on that deal for Dave, if you wanna, you know, carry it. I think it's, you know, if you don't wanna have to.
No, that's fine, yeah.
So the Oakport Township had applied for the local road improvement grant, and of course, Clay County had agreed to be the sponsor of that in order, in order for it to, to work, and of course, that was accepted. There was a, a cost share between the grant, and then the local, there was a local share that Oakport agreed to also pay, and I believe, I believe we worked out a deal with them where that was gonna be, really they paid out, but we gave them the choice of, of paying it over, their local share over a period of five years, I think it was. But regardless, they were gonna, they were gonna pay their local share, and according, according to the regulations required by Min-Dada Grant Agreement, a resolution for the use of the funds needs to be approved by the county board, and, and so the request was to approve the LRP grant agreement number one oh three three seven eight four and the resolution for this project, and I would so move that.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on, no one in favor of the motion, Senate five, we say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. All right. Steve, did somebody get hold of Dave, let him know he doesn't have to?
Yeah, I'll let him know he doesn't need it.
Anything else? Board adjourned.